Good morning.
Good morning.
Today is June the first, it's the first day of hurricane season, so we thought it'd be a good day to have a hurricane preparedness meeting. The time is ten o'clock, we have a special meeting of commissioners court for this matter, and the meeting will come to order. Sheriff Kane, will you please lead us in the invocation?
Lord Jesus, we're taking the power to come to you this morning, giving thanks first of all for this day and the opportunity to gather freely, to discuss the matters at hand here in our county, emergency management matters, Lord, we ask that you give us the wisdom, the guidance and the understanding to carry out this meeting and to be prepared should anything happen. Lord, we ask for a safe and quiet hurricane season, and we pray that you will give that to us. Lord, we ask forgiveness where we have failed you, and we ask that you continue to be with those us and those that are on our hearts and minds, and those in our families, all the men and women across Central Georgia, all these things we ask in your son, Jesus' name.
Amen.
Thank you, Sheriff. Mayor Sarat, will you lead us in the pledge?
Yes, sir, I sure will.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank y'all, please be seated. Item number four is discussion among national, state, county and city officials, as well as leaders from other organizations involved in hurricane preparation and recovery. And at this time, Teresa, I will turn the meeting over to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Did everybody get a handout? Um, my name is Teresa Wiggly, I'm the emergency manager coordinator for Harden County, and I would like to start with self-introduction. Um, commissioners, do y'all want to start?
Sure.
Commissioner Nuffin Cooper, precinct one.
Chris Kirkendall, precinct two.
Wayne McDaniel, Harden County.
Ken Felt, commissioner precinct three.
Alvin Roberts, commissioner precinct four.
Angela Gore, county auditor.
Laura Keifer.
Andy Patrick, National Weather Service.
Rick Thomasy, Mayor of Rose Hill Acres.
Tommy Bartosz, City of Sealsby.
A.C. Buckler, Mayor of Sealsby.
Linda.
Linda Wilson, juvenile probation.
Go ahead, Connie. I'm Connie Backton.
Michael.
Michael, juvenile probation.
Debbie McWilliams, county treasurer.
Toy Akerich, health department.
Missy Whitney, purchasing.
Eric Norvias, DPS.
Graham Belvin, DPS.
Mark Davis, City of Pity.
Randy Cook, SO.
Gary Spears, Sheriff's Office.
Aaron Topresso.
Amanda Young, flood plan.
Esther Scarborough, flood plan.
Debbie Midasalver, human resources.
John Velastro, Lumberton ISD.
Ed Kane, work for Saratoga.
That's true.
Eddie Devon, Sheriff's Office.
Donna McNamaly, crime victims.
Jim McLean, Sarah Tugafire.
Cindy Flower, Sarah Tugafire.
Megan Kelly, juvenile probation.
Linda Davis, Harden County Digital Healthcare.
Jared Bound, juvenile probation, she messed up.
Mary Jones, Harden Jefferson.
Sharon Whitby, Health Department.
Steve Stone, Texas Department.
Michael Tywater, Texas Department.
Sarah Duprey, Texas Department.
Vinnie Youngblood, amateur radio operator.
Steve Clark, City Attorney.
Don Sarat, City of Lumberton.
Joe Tolson, Martin County ESD Two.
Bob Simms, Martin County ESD Two.
Zane Provost, City Sergeant.
Lynn Withers, Harden County ESD Five.
Ron Jones, Silver Park.
Joe Clark, ESD Six.
Tyler Slade, Texas Department of Forest Service.
Laura Comer, Auditor's Office.
Jim Stoffman, Coons Fire.
David Colton, Texas Forest Service.
Boye Covin, Long Island.
Sue Landry, Southeast Texas Regional Planting Commission.
Larry Short, Charlotte Lake.
Ruth Robinson, Salado.
David Chappell, District Attorney.
Roger Costle, Lumberton, Bud.
Jackie Yowes, purchasing.
Uh, there's a couple of chairs up here if someone wants to come sit. So, thank you all for coming. I like the diverse group we have here, and it shows we all work together as one county as a team. Like to start out by introducing Andy Patrick, he's the meteorologist in charge for the National Weather Service in Lake Charles. So, Andy, if you want to kind of stand over here. He's going to give us an update on the hurricane season and the flooding.
Okay, well, first let me talk a little bit about the obviously the flooding that's been going on the last couple of weeks. Got good news, the weather's going to be clear across much of Texas and, and North Texas and, uh, and Southern Oklahoma. That's basically where they have twenty to thirty inches of rain. Say, two, three, two over pretty much a month span, so they've really had very active weather. All that rain pretty much filters down into the various river basins, especially across central and east Texas. We're talking even Trinity River, we've been hearing a lot in the news. Colorado River, some of the rivers of South Texas, then of course the Natures River. Sabine River's al- already been falling for about the past week, a lot of the, there were some releases over Toledo Bend earlier, but now our focus is a little more on the Natures River. And the good news is there's, there seems to be, uh, less water coming in or less water going out of Sonny Hagan Lake, so that's going to be good news as well, but I still expect a slow fall. Looks like there could be some flood, lowland flooding, particularly along the Tyler Jasper and Harden County lines, where there, where there's been some pretty, from what I understand, pretty significant inland flooding. So, the good news is the, it's going to be a, it's going to, it's not going to get worse than what it is, and we're probably going to see a slow improvement after that, so. Um, I want to be here if you have any questions regarding that, regarding this or my hurricane talk here, which will only be about five or five, no more than ten minutes, so. Hurricane season 2015 is here, started today. I'm going to briefly summarize the outlook, and Teresa, I gave Teresa a summary of some slides that we've been giving to various, uh, our various partners to discuss the hurricane season and so forth. But I'll just summarize as far as what we're expecting this, this hurricane season. Many of you may follow, um, climate patterns, El Niño, La Niña. We're going to be in the pretty good El Niño pattern, uh, climate pattern. What that basically means is, uh, during the winter times across South Texas, somewhat stormy, but normally leads to a quieter hurricane season for the Atlantic and Gulf of Mexico, so. Right now, and let me refer to my notes here, but I, but we are going to be seeing a, we are, looks like as far as the NOAA hurricane outlook's concerned, there's a seventy percent chance of a below-normal season. And what that basically means is, we're expecting only about six to eleven named storms, three to six hurricanes, and the possibility that we won't have a major hurricane, at least in the Atlantic side. Been following the Pacific side, there's already major hurricane, Hurricane Andres in the Pacific. But right now, we, we're expecting no more than two, and the good news from a prediction standpoint is, you know, there's a lot higher confidence than there are, say, in past seasons. So, um, but I, as I tell everybody, you know, El Niño's a pretty, in baseball terms, El Niño's a pretty good pitcher, but doesn't throw a shutout. We're going to have to really kind of still keep, keep in mind that there have been some, some hurricanes during these types of patterns. The main one that comes to mind, mostly, mostly over Louisiana, we've had a few tropical storms, uh, in the late nineties especially, that affected the area, so, um, the, the main bottom line is the heavier rate, heavier, the impacts we get from hurricanes, you know, can still occur, but in other forms, like heavy rain, flooding and so forth. So, that's just something to, to keep in mind, that even though we might be expecting a quieter hurricane season, heavier rainfall events are still going to be quite possible. One other thing, I know we don't normally talk about it too much here unless there's a major, major hurricane, let's say a category three or higher, but storm surge. One, the new changes this season is going to be actually, uh, in some of the storm surge messaging, so to speak. We, based on some lessons we learned from Hurricanes Ike, Hurricanes Charlie that affected Florida in two thousand and four and so forth, we needed a better message storm surge. So, right now, we are prototyping this year as storm surge warning that works independently of the actual hurricane warning. So, for example, um, we get a lot of inundation, say, up in the Natures for a category three, category four that affects parts of Harden County. That can occur, so we're going to be, um, we're going to kind of be, uh, keeping, keeping that in mind. We can issue, we could possibly in, in that type of storm, let's say a Rita type of storm, actually consider issuing that type of warning and sending all the way up the Harden County, so. That, that's one thing, and the other thing, and this is mainly for decision makers, um, whether you're emergency management, law enforcement, we are going to be, we are going to be forwarding some at times when needed inundation graphics. And, um, my slideshow that I have, we'll probably delve a lot more into the details, but if you want to talk to me about exactly what they have, I can kind of show you here after this meeting. The, uh, one other thing, the last thing basically I needed, wanted to talk with you about was, um, what it basically happens if we have a named system that's going to be affecting southeast Texas and in this area in particular. What generally happens is the National Weather Service will initiate conference calls and webinars. Teresa will normally be on the call, or perhaps even if the situation's serious enough, some elected officials will also be joining her as well, I would assume, that's usually typical, whenever we have a significant hurricane threat to this area. And we normally, what we will normally do is we will highlight, we, we normally won't focus on so much what the actual hurricane is going to move, do from a movement standpoint, where specifically it's going to hit. We will focus on four major impacts, and that is the wind, the wind, any sort of storm surge, the, uh, the threat of heavy rain, and the possibility tornado. So, those are the four major weather items we're going to do, we're going to try to nail down the timing of all those, and really try to maybe give some confidence as far as, you know, the magnitude of, of those types of impacts. So, we'll be in constant contact, the, the bigger the threat, the more coordination we will do with the various counties across Texas. So, um, so that's really about all I have, and I'll be happy to answer any questions after the, after the meeting, and, um, and thank you for letting me, uh, address the, address the count, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, if you'll look at your little packet, I'm not going to go over the incident command list, it's self-explanatory. This is our ICS chart, Incident Command System, it's got everyone's names and the responsibilities that they have. The next page is the Incident Command System contacts, their phone numbers. If y'all didn't get one of these, they're out on the table when you leave.
And are we going to email that out to everybody?
We will. We will email everyone that signed up, be sure and sign up if you didn't. We will send this out with, um, Andy Patrick's information. The next page is the points of distribution, our pod sites. TJ Hall couldn't be here this morning, he had a doctor's appointment. But it shows the locations, your main pod site will be the Coontz High School, we, if y'all remember that from Hurricane Rita. And then, uh, if the cities will double check, make sure your pod site is the same place. Lumberton is in the Goodwill Business Parking Lot, is that correct, Chief? Sealsby is at the Sealsby Fire Station.
Correct.
Okay. Sour Lake, Sour Lake Fire Department, is that correct? Okay. Uh, Coontz Courthouse, it'll be the parking lot. And then West Harden ISD covers, uh, Saratoga, Batson and Thicket, okay. The embarkation hub, Robert Hall used to be over that, he no longer is. We have Esther Scarborough, our flood plan administrator, wave Esther. She will, it's still at the Sealsby Middle School. Now, what the embarkation hub is, for those of you that don't know, it's where we take people to get on state buses to get out of the area if we have a hurricane. We're hoping that the churches will do the same that they did last time, and get vans and transport the people to the hub. So, we're going to be working with churches. And Esther has put together a list of people, she got a group of people that will be handling it now. Now, keep in mind, this is at H minus forty-eight hours. This is way before the storm would hit. So, this, we'll be getting these people out at H minus forty-eight. The normal evacuation time for general population is H minus thirty-six hours. So, we get them out early. And our sister city is Huntsville now, it's not Carthage. The medical people, and Toy will talk about those in a minute. Did you have anything you want to say about the hub?
Uh, the only thing that I'm short on are, uh, people who work with the pets. If there's someone that would like to volunteer to help, uh, does it seem to be our ag agent with the pets, you need someone in that spot.
Okay, y'all keep that in mind if you know someone that's an animal lover.
And wants to say you have pet care.
That wants to take care of them.
Write your name on it.
Cool, got a volunteer already, that was quick. Okay, uh, two-on-one functional needs, Toy. You want to talk a little bit about our two-on-one people, because I know the cities are wondering where their lists are. You want me to talk about it, or you want? Just, if you can stand up.
Good morning.
You can stand up while you're, where you're at.
I can't hear you. Uh, we have a really low number this year, we've switched over to what we call the steer program from our original two-on-one. We're not really sure why the number is so low. I've called about almost two hundred people, and seventy-five percent of those people are deceased. So, that means that drops our number extremely low on our two-on-one list. So, what we're going to try to do is start doing some advertisement, and you guys put the word out to, people that need to be on the list primarily are people that cannot evacuate out of the county by themselves. A lot of people are still registering just because they see a commercial, they hear somebody talking about it, they hear it on the radio that says, "If you need assistance." Well, the assistance for that, first and foremost, is to get you out of the county, that's only if you cannot do it on your own. Realistically, we will probably see about thirty-five to forty-five people that are in special needs that have to have an ambulance to get out. That's very difficult for us because ambulances are going to be strode out all over the county, Jefferson, Orange, Jasper, everywhere. So, what we do, my staff and I break it down to each individual person, call them, talk to them directly. We can't get them, we go out to their home, and we find out exactly what their medical needs are. Whenever you suggest someone calls, make sure that they give exact information, because a lot of people give old phone numbers, or a neighbor that really doesn't like them too much, you know, and expect them to help. So, make sure that they have a contact if you feel that they may not be able to answer the phone twenty-four-seven, or something like that. Some of the nursing homes are calling and putting their people on our list, that's not what we need. Nursing homes will evacuate those people themselves, so therefore, if they're on our list now, then we have to turn around and take them off. So, like I said, we're going to be doing some advertising, especially out in the west end of the county. There's a lot of people out there that need to be on the list that are not. Those people are the ones that'll call at the last minute and say, "Hey, I think I really need to get out," and they have absolutely no help whatsoever. So, do you have any questions for me?
What about our home health, do they help you, tell you, tell you who needs evacuation, or, you know, without support or whatever in the county?
Most people that are home health, they have family that's going to take them out, because they're already home. Um, we do have maybe five or six that we would have to help get out, that absolutely have no money.
And they end up faxing us their information at the last minute, so we try to encourage home health to not wait till the last minute. And this-
The embarkation center, uh, you know, last time we had a little problem, we had a lady that we evacuated to the import facility, and she got over there and she changed her mind. Is there any process, or, we had to go get her. She kept raising nine kinds of-
She changed her mind that she wanted to be evacuated?
Uh, she did want to be evacuated at first, and then she changed her mind when she got to the embarkation.
I think I vaguely remember that. The only thing there, I mean, they have a right to stay home, you know, they, they do.
I'm just wondering what the responsibility of, uh-
Responsibility of the county, and as far as the Health Department goes, we're mandated, mandated by the state, we have to take care of them regardless. If we would go out and assess her home, if it's safe for her to return, or if we feel that she's in an area that may flood, may get extremely high winds, she would have to come back with us.
When we had to go back and get her, it was kind of a, a burden on the department.
That, that's where- That's where we're going to try to work with the churches for transportation, because remember, it's at H minus forty-eight, so they're still here and they're still safe. So, we're going to try to coordinate, Esther's going to try to coordinate with the churches to make sure something's available. That, thank you, Toy. That brings up, uh, something else I was thinking about. If we do not get the state buses, keep in mind, we may need to borrow some school buses from your transportation departments, because we, you know, we'll have to get them out. The state was real good about it last time, the last couple of times, but we may have to do that with school buses. And I think we'll work with ISDs very well on it, okay. Okay.
We're going to have a written action plan on evacuation. You know, there's transportation issue, us, us that provide EMS. We would like to see to kind of provide a written evacuation, evacuation plan.
An IAP.
See what our responsibilities are, and if we can plan to give additional, we got a staff of additional medics.
Okay. Yeah, I'll get with Esther on it, and we'll throw together incident action plan. What that is, it's a template, just kind of stating what everybody's responsibilities are, and it helps at the time, so you're not trying to throw it together right when something happens, so. Okay, um, Harden County Traffic Plan is the next couple of pages. This is taken straight out of the, um, traffic plan from the state. I just put in Harden County's responsibilities. The next couple of pages are your city officials list. And some other numbers in the back is, we put the sheriff's office, National Weather Service, Texas Department, Red Cross, Salvation Army, FEMA, game wardens, and you'd be surprised, game wardens are really busy lately with all the animals coming out. The, uh, next page is inland evacuation map. It's not in color, I will be sending it out through email, and it's pretty much stayed the same. It also has a list of the hurricane names on that page. Uh, okay. Then I'm going to talk a little bit about, or Judge, did you want to talk about the little ham radio operator, the ham radio we have here at the courthouse?
Uh, you're, I can. About a year, a little over a year ago, the, uh, local ham radio club installed a repeater here at the courthouse, it's on the third floor, and there's an antenna attached to our tower here. Uh, I know that y'all ran a drill here recently where y'all talked on a portable from here, is that correct? Through that repeater, and you talked to who all?
Benny, who all did we talk to?
We talked to Jasper, uh, Ballack, uh, Ford Johnson. Basically, Ballack was our priority. Was able to do that radio to radio, which, uh, from the, maybe between the second and third floor. That's a good thing, gets us out of the weather, number one. But, uh, if that antenna on the tower goes down, we're just looking for a backup, that's, that's what we concentrate it on. As long as the antenna on the tower's up, we can talk to anybody in Harden County. So, that's, that's a very good deal that we have here set up. Got to consider it might not be there after the winds start forming.
But we do have a very good reliable backup communications if our primary communications were to go down through the ham radio operators, and we appreciate that.
Okay, um, Sue? Um, I'm going to let you talk a little bit about Blackboard Connect. What Blackboard Connect is, it's a reverse nine-one-one system, you want to kind of give a little summary? This is Sue Landry, she's with the Southeast Texas Regional Planting Commission.
Um, Blackboard Connect is a reverse nine-one-one system. It's free to local jurisdictions, we receive a secure grant for this, and it's powerful. We learned this July seventeenth. We had an exercise where elected officials sent messages to their constituency and asked them to register with Stan. We were inundated. Those, those phone calls come to our offices, so I can promise you, we were inundated. Um, we have another mechanism now to handle that, but, um, this is a resource that's available to you to keep your public informed, evacuations, um, embarkation, pod sites, use this system, it is totally free to you.
Or when water goes out.
Or when water goes down.
Goes down.
So, you can keep people informed, both in an emergency and when that emergency subsides. So, it is very powerful, and you can use it as much as you need to.
Is that a system individuals have to register for?
Yes.
By the way, well, yes and no.
Right.
Nine-one-one, we download the, um, the info data, that is the nine-one-one data for use in emergencies, but we don't have access to cell phones, and some people do, and, and most of us live with cell phones. So, people do have to register their cell phones, that's what that exercise was for, to encourage people to register their cell phones. And, um, so you can be a great resource, letting people know, especially some of the people that toys really don't get on in our house, for pre-planning purposes. If they're going to need a ride out, they need help, now's the time to know. And they can go ahead and, and contact it on that list, and you can keep them notified of the need for Blackboard.
And the registration is through Stan, is that right? Do the Stan network?
It is, it is. For the cell phones, yes, it is.
Right.
We, we have access to the nine-one-one data, um, but the only way that we have to, to get cell phone numbers is self-registration, yes, sir.
And there's a link to that on our website, and as well as the Planting Commission's web, website. So, if you, uh, if you haven't registered yourself, or any of your family members, or get it out to your constituents, and let them know that they, they should register for that to get those alerts.
And if you're here at the meeting today and you signed in, we will be registered, we'll be putting you in the system, so if you get an alert from Harden County, it's letting you know we put you in. I'm making what's called an emergency readiness list, so that if we have to send out a message in a hurry, everyone here will get that message. In less than five minutes, too, it's pretty quick. Okay, um, the Disaster Recovery Manual, the next page is, uh, the link to it, and, um, of course, our Emergency Management Facebook page. Disaster Recovery Manual is something everybody needs to download, because it's got the forms in it that you'll need for an emergency. So, try to familiarize yourself with it if you get a chance. It's the forms that FEMA is looking for. If it's not written down, it didn't happen. And those are kind of self-explanatory, they're really easy. The next page is the National Incident Management System, NIMs requirements. Anyone that is going to a scene or working any type of disaster is supposed to have IS-700. If you don't know what that is, please get with me, and I'll help you download it, even if I need to print it for you. You have to take FEMA IS Independent Study, IS-700. It's the law now, if you go handle a disaster, you have to have that class. And a lot of us have already had it, so. I am going to bring up a couple of things that I forgot, is that all right? The contracts for the city and the county, I mean, the contracts we had in place for the debris management was Ashbrit, and they've chosen to renew that contract for another year. The debris, uh, SAC and the rest of the contracts, they haven't sent anything back in, right, Jackie? So, we're going to have to go out for bids for the other items. But Ashbrit did renew theirs, the monitoring, they didn't send anything back in, so we'll have to go out for a bid for that. So, I'm just letting the cities know. Um, also, there's a class that I want to schedule, it's called Pipeline Security for Rural Communities. I'm thinking about July eighteenth, it's a Saturday from eight to five. Would love for everybody to come to it, it's a really good class. I have to get it scheduled, so, once I do that, I'll send out an email. One other thing, the Disaster Accounting Class that people have been talking about, we have scheduled it for the county, July seventh. And I talked to the gentleman, and he said that it'd be better for the cities to schedule their own class, so what we're going to do is go ahead and take the class, July seventh, it's Disaster Accounting, and they teach us the forms that FEMA's looking for to turn in. So, once we take the class, we're going to learn it that day, and there's two other classes, then I'm going to be helping him teach each individual city. So, we're going to get that scheduled with y'all. And, uh, Toy, what was the steer, what's the acronym, I mean, what's the state registration, state transportation emergency area? Registration, that's what steer stands for, we didn't say that earlier. We'll have that on the website, too. But I think that's about it, did anybody have any questions?
I have a little bit.
Sure.
I have gotten eight from current churches so far, um-
State your name and who you're with.
The automatic daily transportation, um, I've got eight churches so far that has, thus confirmed, yes, that they do have vans, and they will help transport.
Good.
Um, I have three that do not have vans, but they, they will, they want to help in any way that they can. Um, and, and then there's two churches that actually showed that they will do a shelter if need be.
Wonderful.
At their place, one's in the west end and then one's in, um, in, um, Harden. But, um, they, there's a couple of the churches that also, Teresa wants a, uh, they want more information, so I can email them more information.
Get a group picture.
So, whatever it was that you were talking about, that, um, that you're going to get out to everybody else, the, the preparedness plan or whatever, if you could get one to me, so I can get it to the churches also, um-
Once we formulate it, everybody will get a copy of it. It's, it's called an Incident Action Plan, and anytime you have a disaster, it basically outlines what you're going to be doing, who's going to be doing it, and when. So, we'll get together on that.
Okay, and also, when we were calling the churches, we were also, um, reiterating to them to have their members, um, if need be, call the two-on-one also, to get that, to get that out.
Wonderful.
And if they're going to do all the tests and such, to get that information out. Does you, the Witness Church, they have, they, it's the only one, another church that, they've already- Another church that, they've already implemented their own plan to where they're getting with elders in the church, and they're getting with, um, people that's in their church needing information or needing help to get out, so they have like their own little list and stuff, too.
That's awesome. Thank you so much. She is working with the churches with the embarkation hub. Sarah, real quick, uh, did you wanna give us an update on the roads right now? This is Sarah Dupree with Text Dot, do you wanna stand?
As far as like flooding?
Do we have any closures right now in Harden County?
No, no, there's no closures in, um, in any of the districts we handle right now. Liberty County has some water on the road, um, in some areas, but no closures.
This is Sarah Dupree with Text Dot, she sends us the messages when roads are closed, so, thank you so much.
No, we're good.
Thank, good, thank you. David, real quick, are you still going to handle the website for us?
Sure.
When we have a disaster, David Sheffield handles the website, put updates on it, so it's nice to know.
I have, I have questions, you know, we saw this mist of, but what about those are our emergency people that are here? How do we, how do we participate in them? I retired the Lumlon Fire Department, in case y'all didn't know, and I went through two, that, you know, Bonnie, we came to work thirty-six hours, we was all gone. We showed up for Rita thinking the same thing, two weeks later, we still wearing the same drawers. You didn't have a spare, you washed the napkin and the hand. We had no plan for feet or fire, uh, and we were washing in buckets, you know, all kinds of stuff, so. We, do we need to have some kind of contingency plan to have water and food at our stations, you know, where the people are gonna be? So, they do like to eat, you know?
Yes, sir.
So, damn touchdown. Cause I'm over here at the courthouse with a lady over, she was cooking stew every day, I think.
Joe, we didn't have that problem at Lomington PD, that's where I studied.
They wasn't, we went, we went to the law department, broke in, well, we done the water.
I think the statute of limitations is up. Could you put Joe Clark in charge of, uh, food? And clothes washing, too.
We got you down. Y'all write that down, Joe Clark is handling donations for us.
While, while we're talking about Silby Fire, I'd like to say congratulations to the new elected chief, Robin Jones.
It's Robin Jones, new Silby Fire Chief. Hey, Joe, on a serious note, we tell everybody to be self-sufficient. So, um, we encourage everybody to go ahead and make your kit with your food in it. Of course, fire departments cook a lot, so.
Yeah, but if it's a long, i- if it's prolonged, I mean, we can, we can, uh, we'll come up with something to where we have some, uh, some help. Usually, local providers will help, and then we also have resources from the state for help, for food, for first responders.
Right.
We'll make sure that we have all that covered.
And the, and the grocery stores are real good about donating things.
What facility do we have in place for people that we cannot get out in time? Are we still using the Methodist Church?
That's called our Last Resort Shelter. And right now, the Methodist Church was what we had set up, we're gonna double check with them.
We need to have food for that, because I had sixty people over there last time with no food. At least the Methodist Church's to climb to reach there.
Okay. We'll find out for sure which facility we're gonna use, we, we do not like to make that public, because we don't want people to think we're a sheltering county. We want them to keep going, but in essence, we'll have some people that will get caught on the road and we have to pull them off the road, so.
Yes, bring them in, but we need to be able to feed them, too.
Right.
We'll check on that and I'll send out an email and let y'all know.
Don't have any kind of resources for like refueling people that run out of gas?
Talking about, uh, yeah, the state now does that, don't they? Yeah, the state now has a truck that they come around to fuel up anybody, you know, that, there wasn't any provision during, uh, Rita or Ike either, I believe.
We start courtesy control, we do that, we have two trucks that run the county.
Thank you.
We did have some residents during, uh, Rita that stayed because they were out fueled, we couldn't get them in.
That'll happen.
That's one of the, one of the many things we learn after Rita and, and Ike as well.
Keep in mind, we're gonna lock down the courthouse the same way we did, and the only way to get in is the West Wing, so. And we'll have meetings just like last time, if we have a major hurricane, eight o'clock in the morning, we're gonna have a briefing at the commissioners, I mean, at the West Wing courtroom, so.
Teresa, I wanna, one of the weaknesses that we saw birth in Rita and Ike was a weakness in the planning process mechanic. Meaning that, uh, ever, in the last two hurricanes, of course, Rita was the first. We were reactive to every event, we weren't proactive at all. And of course, we, I, I kinda feel that almost in six to digit five, the task that we're assigned, we want a written action plan. We wanna know what you want us to do, and then we'll develop a plan to support that. So, even here, when we have this meeting today, we have, we have some general ideas. And, but I think if the county is the lead agency, they need to come up with a more formal plan and assign those tasks and know exactly what we should do. You need, you know, I wanna, I don't mean to criticize, but if we have to have emergency shelters, what are you gonna do? We just can't wait like we had to do in Sauer Lake today. It came and then we had to have a shelter. Even though, you know, the decision was made, well, we're not gonna shelter, well, you know, you can't tell that to the, to the, the people that you're trying to help protect. They wanna have someplace to go now to do it. So, only thing that I, I suggest is all of these little problems that we saw, especially for the first forty-eight hours, the first three days of much longer time. I think that, uh, that, I would personally like to see a little bit more detailed process and explaining exactly what we're up against, because other than that, we're gonna take care of ourselves. And we're not too concerned about that, Cindy and Robyn and all of that, so.
I don't think, I don't think Cindy will be baking you any more pies in the near future.
Yeah, you may not wanna eat if she does.
Yeah.
Well, I would suggest we don't write, publish a, a list of shelters of last resort, uh, otherwise, we'll have shelters of last resort, or a full ticket.
Yeah.
So, we came up with those at the last minute, and I'll suggest we don't publish that.
Yeah, we, we can.
Still, your responders need to know what their responsibilities are, okay? Now, uh, if you don't, we're gonna assume what they are. And it could, it, it, when what happens, but we assume what they are, it could be a difference of opinion between your emergency manager group. And the weaknesses of all multidisciplined emergency response groups is they all have a different way of doing this.
That's true.
Okay, and all we're trying to do is, is try to eliminate some of that potential conflict that you have, you know? Volunteer for, we don't even like each other. That's what you get into occasionally, you know, when you have...
Well, we'll, we'll throw it together.
It'd be a good idea, Glenn, if we could all sit down and go over and put a plan together?
Why don't you head that committee?
Sir?
You and, you and Teresa and I, and any of the other fire chiefs that are interested could sit down and go over exactly what needs to be done.
We have a, a significant EMS responsibility, that's a little bit different, but it's lengthened it up onto that, you know, EMS responsibility, and that's very important to that.
And y'all do like each other, don't say that again.
Well, no. They don't like each other, they love each other.
Do any of the commissioners have anything they'd like to say?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Teresa, Judge, um, I can't remember if it was Rita or Ike, cause I've worked the buds of them. And one of them, I know that there were some of the, um, more special needs people that were blown down.
Yes.
Is that gonna happen again? Because I know we, I talked to a lady that called here asking from her house to be checked in Lomington, she was in Georgia somewhere, in a hospital in Georgia.
Honestly, that all depends on the size of the storm and the speed of the storm, we won't really know until something like that happens. I mean, that was a last resort effort to get people out, but they did it because the storm, Rita was moving so quick.
But also, we should refer to some medical special needs.
Right.
When we bring the state into, they love those people and ambulances, a lot of times, they go straight to the airport. I know Commissioner Cooper was involved in that, was the state side of it, as far as helping to coordinate the ambulances, and they take it straight to the airport, put them on the airplane, and we have no clue where they went.
We currently have a contract with, uh, EMS on that already anyway, don't we?
Uh, no, we went out for bids, nobody, nobody.
Oh, okay, I remember going out for bids, I didn't know.
No one turned anything in?
Nobody responded.
So, then we'll have to rely on the state when no one's on.
The primary goal for the state of Texas is to evacuate every medical special need person. They will go to a five thousand bed facility somewhere down south. I can't really disclose it, but it's there, it's available for everybody. Our goal is to get everybody out, is to not leave anybody behind. And that is the main purpose of educating and making the general public population aware of the services we have for them.
And they, they can call two-one-one to still register.
They can also call the Health Department, we would prefer not, but a lot of times, two-one-one services get misinformed, a lot of misinformation. Because they're from out of town, they don't know the areas, so they can call and we can register on, on the new system if they wanna call the Health Department. But there is a five thousand bed facility, and that's the primary goal for the state of Texas, is to get them out.
That's it, sir.
Pardon me?
You'd say?
Yes.
Okay, the ones that won't leave, we could have us both hurricanes. Who is going to be, I know Linda was over it last time, over charge of the, uh, ordering the oxygen bottles, because we've always had to supply oxygen bottles to people that chose to remain home.
We won't do that. Anybody that has portable oxygen tanks, we require them to have a month ahead of time in advance, a extra little thing.
You know they're not going to.
If they...
What if they don't?
What we've done is, most of those people that have that have a home health agency. We contact the home health agency nurse, and they have to make sure that that's ordered ahead of time. If they don't, we can't order that ahead of time, we can't stock it, you know, we can't do anything like that. We just have to make, hopefully, the state gets us to us, gets it to us if we have it.
Do any of the mayors have anything they'd like to say?
Good luck.
Thank you, sir.
Sheriff? Anything? Anyone else have anything else they'd like to add, any chiefs?
After words, um, I know, following any kind of, I know after the floods recently, after the ice storms, we get inundated with calls of, is this road open, is this road open, is this road open? If you know anyone who wants to know if a road's open, the best thing to do is go to driveTexas.org. We have all the statewide road conditions right there on my left side. Um, we also have DriveTexas.org, yeah. We have tons of people that will be entering road conditions. Um, we also have a Twitter feed, Text Dot Lumlon. Um, I put all of our road closures on there. Um, I will be, we be non-stop, we have heard came about road closures. Um, if there is a tree across the roadway, um, send it to me, I'll put it, post it on Twitter. Um, when the Rainbow Bridge was frozen over, we were getting people constantly calling us, is Rainbow Bridge open, is Rainbow Bridge open? I posted a picture of it looking like an ice skating rink, and we got a lot less calls. So, um, pictures speak a lot, if y'all can send me pictures, um, anything like that, big, go to DriveTexas.org for all of your road closures, that's the best thing to do, if you're speaking to people.
We appreciate you.
I have a question, Teresa, um, and I'm calling, or, once the churches call me back and stuff, and we're telling them about two-one-one and stuff. And I know we have a place for pets. What is criteria for someone's pets to be there, because I know I'm gonna get that question.
For a pet to be?
They have to have a leash and a cage.
Yeah, they, they should provide a leash and a cage if they go to the embarkation hub. But they'll, depending on how many animals we get, we'll decide if they go to the area or not. Last time, we only had maybe, what, two or three, and so they decided it was better to keep them here, right Jared?
Yes.
We don't have a, we have six right now, and they all have cages, they're all up today on their shots, they all have leashes as well.
We had some donated cages, we don't have the cages.
Yeah, we have plenty, plenty of those.
We've got a storage unit, although they're full of, of all the necessary...
Okay, so these are the pets that are, if someone has to, um, use our evacuation system, that's for their pets?
Medical special needs pets.
They will check their pets in when they check in, if they're on vacation.
If they're not medical special needs, we're encouraged to take their pets with them, don't, don't drop them off with us.
Okay.
The largest one over there is for Jared, though, so you can't, none of those are available.
All right, does anybody else have anything further? Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, uh, what about the fire? When do we know if this grid here is back on, or this grid over here? Andy or Jayco, has anybody here addressed that problem?
They keep us updated, they'll let...
You can get it on your cell phones now.
Over at the station, can we get it from there and say, okay, my house is back on now, don't have to worry about it?
You can look it up online now.
Yeah, you can put it on your phone, on that energy app, and it'll tell you exactly where you're...
That's all right, you got power.
Yeah.
On your cell phone, you should have power.
Sure. Not three days after the storm.
If you're powered up, you should be able to charge yourself.
And I would like to say something about that oxygen, we had a problem, we had some people that we had to have, portable, had to have them a hundred and ten. So, we would have generators in the parking lot, have people sitting in cars. And you have one of those generators run out of gas, it got serious quick, so, they start, you know, I'm not making fun of them, they couldn't get, they couldn't get their oxygen.
That's sad.
Well, yeah, it was really sad, you know, but we were, everybody didn't get out, but we just, ah, we gotta try to take care of them the best we can.
Essentially, we need to try to get them out before the storm.
Right.
Get their own home oxygen, they need to lean down.
But some of them don't.
We have a bunch of hurricane guides, please pick some up, guys, I know y'all wanna spread them out and look at them and study them.
Are they on the table out there?
Uh, they're going to be.
Okay. All right, yes, sir.
Mr., on that, you talked about the IAP?
Yes.
And I know a lot of people, it's kinda, uh, it's got some knowledge, but to them, they don't, they don't know it very well. Uh, as far as, if you send that out and get them started on it, if you need help with a short team coming in, to kinda assign different people, different jobs? But, um, during IAP, if you look through there, you have logistics, you have, uh, all, all the different things, they'll take care of all the needs that they're talking about. And then we can send, we can, uh, order up your short teams, come down and go through that with you.
Awesome.
People and then kinda set it up, if you need, name, name people to do that. And if you want, you come down and help you when something actually happened, you know, to order them.
You know I want you to.
What is your name again?
Thank you. David Colton.
David Colton, when the Texas Forest Service.
Texas Forest Service.
I retired from the Texas Forest, and then I went back to work for the Texas A&amp;M Forest.
He helped us a lot with the wildfires, he helped save the county, so.
If you, if you say, if you get the team, order them up, as, as far as I, if you go by that ICS system, you, you can designate everybody, uh, a certain person to do everything, anybody, all the way down to the, take care of the pets.
Right.
The logistical needs, the, the first...
Yeah, I'll get with you and we'll, we'll start it, and I'll get, we'll get Glenn there, too. I'll get with you probably one day this week. For those of you that don't know the IAP, it's, uh, it's in the Incident Command System, so if you wanna look up the forums.
All right, anything else?
I move to adjourn. Sir?
I appreciate everyone coming.
We stand adjourned. And I want to echo that, I want to thank everybody for coming today, we really appreciate it.